Good evening. City of Lamarck, City Council's regular agenda of April tenth, twenty twenty-three. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a regular meeting on April tenth, twenty twenty-three, beginning at six P M. in council chambers, at eleven oh nine B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. In accordance with section five five one dot one two seven B of the Texas Local Government Code, the Presiding Officer and a quorum of the City of Lamarck Council, City Council intend to be and will physically be present at eleven oh nine B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public. The meeting will be broadcast at this location on channel sixteen and via YouTube. The council will meet for the purposes of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called to order. Kiera, can you give us a roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember District A.
Present.
Councilmember District B.
Present.
Councilmember District C.
Present. My address is three eight zero one Kel, K E L L Boulevard, Wichita Falls, Texas.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember District D.
Present.
And Mayor.
Present.
Thank you.
I will now move to our invocation and pledge. I would like to ask Councilwoman Yancy to lead us in our invocation and Councilwoman McCallum to lead us in our pledge.
Father, this evening we come to you saying thank you for life and liberty. We say thank you for this community of Lamarck. We say thank you for our leaders, our mayors, our staff and the people that work very hard to make sure that we operate in the spirit of excellence. And now we ask you for divine wisdom to make the correct decisions, the best decisions for our residents and our citizens. We thank you for the ones that strive for team environment. We thank you for the ones who are team players. We thank you for the ones who love our country, who love America and who most of all love the city of Lamarck. Give us wisdom and show us the way. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
We are at the point of proclamation, presentation. And the first person that we recognize tonight is Mrs. Anna Lopez. So should I say Miss Anna Lopez? Sis, do you want to shift that on this?
Yes, if the family could please come forward. I'd like to recognize actually the shirts that the family is wearing, their Lamarck kindness rocks. Recently, we had the unfortunate incident at one of our parks, at Island Bayou Park, where some vandalism occurred. And I believe the family was visiting the park. And during their time there, they started slowly but surely cleaning up after the vandalism that had occurred. And we want to recognize Ms. Lopez. Thank you so much for your leadership at your young age of taking the leadership. And I'd like to invite Mom, Dad, if there's anything you'd like to share about the experience yourself. The microphone is yours.
I'll just say she did it mostly all by herself. She, I tried to take part, but she was running in front of me and doing it herself. And she thought we should call nine one one.
Thank you. And what's her name? What's her name? Anna. Thank you, Anna.
Yeah, thanks, babe.
Thank you for, thank you for being the change that we all want to see. And thank you for taking care of our parks, Lopez. Congratulations.
Thanks, y'all. Thank you so much.
Why did that upset you so much? Because of what? I don't know. It just upset you? That's okay. You responded in the right way. It's something positive. All right? So because you were a good citizen, we are going to give you this certificate of appreciation from this council and from all of the citizens of this great city, okay? And it says, certificate of appreciation. The following award is given to Anna Lopez. This certificate is given to Ms. Anna Lopez for her compassion, helpfulness, and kindness in giving back to the city of Lamarck. It's signed by our city manager, Mr. Cesar Garcia, and myself, the mayor, Mr. Keith Bell.
Congratulations. Great job, parents. Parents, great job. Great job, parents. Thank you. And I'd like to recognize that the Parks Board brought this to our attention. It actually went, we called Lamarck viral, if you will. Several folks reported that, that the incident had taken place. And before we could even take action, Ms. Lopez had already taken charge. So thank you so much for your assistance.
Thank you, thank you. We're now at item, let's see, Work Zone Awareness Week. Officers of the Mayor for the City of Lamarck Proclamation, whereas the Work Zone Awareness Week is an annual campaign built at the start of construction season to protect driving, through highway construction sites. And whereas the twenty twenty-three Work Zone Awareness Week is, you play a role in work zone safety, work with us. And whereas roadwork is a hazard, hazardous area, with an estimated ten to fifteen percent of work zone fatalities being worked. And whereas city public works staff are working on and within the city streets on a daily basis. And whereas the City of Lamarck, Texas, the Department of Transportation and private companies will tirelessly build and improve highways, roadways, and bridges. And now therefore, we, the mayor and City Council by virtue of authority vested in us by the City of Lamarck, we hereby proclaim the month of April seventeenth through April twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, as Work Zone Awareness Week in the City of Lamarck. And we hereby encourage all citizens to drive across and give it undivided attention to work zones, working for the individual's working to improve our public infrastructure. In testimony whereof, witness my hand, the Seal of the City of Lamarck, this sixth day of April twenty twenty-three, Keith Bell, Mayor. Let's give a round of applause to those workers. So as is working environment, certainly we want to hear from their leader, Rick Saylor, our public works leader.
I appreciate the recognition. These guys are out there every day, working hard in the street. We appreciate you keeping them safe. We've got gentlemen from our street crew, our utility crews. These guys are out there, like I say, keeping the infrastructure put together, repairing everyday streets, water lines, sewer lines. They do a good job. Appreciate the recognition.
Thank you all.
Nationally, unfortunately, there's many incidents of injuries and fatalities that occur through work zone safety. It's true for PD, it's true for fire, it's also true for public works. We ask that all of Lamarck, please keep all of our employees safe by when they see that the flashing lights that now all of our vehicles have, or they see some of these cars that say, you know, stop frequently. We ask that everybody help keep all of these folks safe so they can make it home to their families safely. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Proclamation, child abuse prevention.
Bring the whole team.
Are we wearing new shirts?
You are.
Yeah.
We are going to allow the folks from CASA to come and introduce themselves and to tell us a little bit about their organization. So who would be the spoke of? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Connie Grekets, and I'm the Executive Director of the Court-appointed Special Advocate Program in Alliston County. And we try to community volunteer to, that are appointed by the court to serve the best interest of children who have experienced abuse and are in the foster care system. And so there are people like you that step up to want to advocate in the court for vulnerable children in our community. At April March, Child Abuse Awareness Prevention Month across the nation. And it really is every month and every day, but we recognize it during the month of April. So thank you for inviting us to be here today. Thank you for wearing your shirts. I hope you all will stand up in a minute and give our whole hashtag sign. Take a picture and show that the City of Lamarck stands behind child abuse awareness prevention.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Council, we would like this group to come forward and take a photo.
Mayor.
We do. I would like to just wonder.
Yes, ma'am.
One of our board members. And she is one of our board members. And this.
Stand back here.
Ms. Stan, the same, Alan, and she is not with CASA, but we serve in the community and volunteers for the Children's Services Board. And so we work together as a connection to the same children.
And if you don't know, it's Thomasian Allen was a teacher and a principal in our school for many years.
I'm glad she's here.
I think really quick, this would mean a lot to me because I adopted my daughter and she was thirty, she's twenty-two days. And CASA was very involved. They were just in the gap for us when we were in the middle in that process of adopting her. So thank you so much. Some of you I've known for a long time. So it's good to see you again and keep doing the good work.
Thank you.
Very good. Officers of the Mayor for the City of Lamarck Proclamation, whereas child abuse is a serious problem permeating every segment of our community. Finding solutions requires input and action from everyone, whereas our children are more valuable resources will shape the future of the City of Lamarck. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. Whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education health, community, and faith-based organizations, business, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. Whereas the City of Lamarck acknowledges that people work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse to contribute to promote the social and emotional wellbeing of children and families in a safe and stable and nurturing environment. And now therefore, we, the mayor and City Council by virtue of the authority vested by the City of Lamarck, Texas, we hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-three as Child Abuse Prevention Month. The City of Lamarck, we do hereby urge all citizens of Lamarck to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. In testimony whereof, witness my hand and the Seal of the City of Lamarck, Texas, this third day of April twenty twenty-three, Keith Bell, Mayor. Let's give this organization a round of applause.
Say, you can start doing the hashtag. I would also like to note that we will be lighting both this building and the library in blue in commemoration of both your commemoration as well as for the fact that it's Autism Month for the entire month of April. We'll be recognizing Autism Month at the second meeting. We want to make sure each one had their own space. But you will see our City Hall and Library lit in blue each night for the entire month.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you, Connie. Thank you so much. Good to see you. It's a long list. Brace yourself.
Fair Housing Fund.
Were unable to make any reception.
Okay, so we'll just read this into the record.
We can.
Officer Mayor for the City of Lamarck Proclamation, whereas the Title Eight, Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, amended for the nation, the housing declared it a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States, whereas the principle of fair housing is not only national law and national policy, but a fundamental human concept and entitled for all, an entitlement for all of them. And whereas the Fair Housing Law, the month of April, provide for an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success and the goal of people housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all of us. Now being resolved that the Lamarck City Council urges everyone in the community to become aware of and to participate and support the fair housing rules and regulations. Now therefore, we, the mayor and City Council by virtue of our authority vested by the City of Lamarck, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-three as fair housing. The City of Lamarck, we hereby urge all citizens of this locality to become aware and support the fair housing law. In testimony whereof, witness my hand, Seal of the City of Lamarck, this third day of April twenty twenty-three, Keith Bell, Mayor, been written and read into the record. National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Surely there is a telecommunicator this time. There's one. Welcome, welcome. Welcome, gee. Welcome to this. You want to say it's G four? Okay, so we're going to read this presented when you're going to make this. Officer of the Mayor for the City of Lamarck Proclamation, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency notices to be prepared. An emergency occurs, the prompt response, police officers, firefighters, and paramedics are responsible to the protection of life, preservation of property, and where the safety of our police officers and firefighters is depending upon the quality and the accuracy of the information obtained from the citizens who telephone the Lamarck Police Department. Whereas telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency service. Whereas telecommunications are also the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing with the information and ensuring their safety. Whereas telecommunications of the Lamarck Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehending of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Where we telecommunicate has a limited compassion, understanding, professionalism, and professionalism during their performance of their job the best you can. Now therefore, we, the mayor and City Council by virtue of the authority vested by the City of Lamarck, Texas, we hereby proclaim April ninth through fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. The City of Lamarck, in honor of the men and women whose diligence, professionalism, keep our city and citizens safe. And in testimony whereof, witness my hand, the Seal of the City of Lamarck, this seventh day of April twenty twenty-three, Keith Bell, Mayor. Let's give our telecommunications. I used to, many of you know a firefighter and I've had to rely on the communication of the telecommunications for my life safety as well. And so I understand how valuable you are, but we certainly want to hear from Chief Argon and Ted again.
Very hundred percent correct. That's the nerve center of this entire city, the first responders. Everything that happens, the bill that happens, there. And every time I leave, like him, you know, they drop in on the one dollar call, one dollar. I drop in and say thank you. Keep them safe because, you know, it's all happening at that nerve center. So I wouldn't want to be a telecommunications. Thank you, my end.
I appreciate them. As he tells, he can tell me what to do. So no, we're all, we all like to think we're pretty good cops, but we know we could not do what they do. It's a tremendous amount of work and multitasking and they deal with all the same heartache and trauma than our police officer do, but without a lot of the resolution. So that can be, that can be hard. So we, we really do appreciate them and I hope, hope our citizens are able to spend the next week showing them how much they do appreciate.
Absolutely. Yes, yes. Would you, would you tell them again your name and your position? I don't know if they will clear on that.
My name is Sheila Meyer and I'm the lead coordinator for Lamarck Police Department.
Thank you.
Yeah, now you're doing recognitions of people.
I, very quickly, just wanted to recognize at last council meeting, we recognized Officer Dana Thomason for her efforts. But also recognize that, that that acknowledgement made it all the way to the state. How Terry Wilson made it down, came and spoke to her in person and thanked her personally. We had a chance to post that review that we wanted to just acknowledge for the record that we made that, that type of effect all the way up through the state level. So we want to thank her for the recognition. But also thank once again Officer Thomason for her diligence in making sure that that child was safe. Thank you.
New officers.
New officers.
We have the pleasure of recently having introduced two officers and that tonight we'd like to recognize two more that have just joined our team. Chief, if you could bring your two officers forward. We've got Marco Hernandez. And I hope not to butcher this, Oliana Buntelo. Is that good? She was just pinned today.
All right.
Got a chance to see that today and just want to take a moment and acknowledge that they've joined our team. We're actively recruiting telecommunications, police officers. Still got, I think, one or two spots in the fire, but we're very happy that we are filling these positions with our great folks.
Yeah.
Chief.
They both graduated March ninth. I went way up there to Houston and seen them graduate from Houston University College. And proud of having a boy. Marco's been working about a month now. And Oliana, in fact, today, this morning. And Oliana, in fact, today or this morning. Uh, we're getting a bunch, some more coming and uh, want to thank them both. Choosing this career, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Believe we had at the uh, presentation from our, for TapSprint.
We have a, we'd like to welcome Dr. Penn to make his presentation. Uh, he's presented to us before, would like to update us on where we are with the TapSprint. As we queue up the presentation, we'll, we'll make it a point to be ready.
Thank you so much, everyone. Uh, three minutes just isn't enough time to talk about TAPS Academy, but I would do my very best, good sir. Have to thank Chief Aragon for having us. The Teen and Police Service Academy since two thousand and eleven has been working to bring together you and police. I mean, I just say enough by saying that, that the tension that exists between those two is great. So since two thousand and eleven, we've been in the Houston Police Department. We serve now with Lamarck High School. Thank you, Chief, very, very much for having us. And if the presentation comes up, go ahead and pick us up to two slides there. I want to get to the business of showing you our pre-test and post-test data. So for eleven weeks, our youth and police officers come together at Lamarck High School. And I want you to see, we have these indicators here. Yes, I'm a doctor, professor of criminology, all that good stuff. So data is very important to us.
Right.
Look what it says for respect the police at pre-test. So we give a pre-test to our youth before they start TAPS Academy. And you can just get the feel of what youth are thinking. I respect the police. Okay, fifty-seven percent. I feel close to the police, fourteen percent. And you see the numbers there, strongly agree or agree. All right. So we then move them through an eleven-week program with officers and youth at Lamarck High School, meeting about an hour and a half per week through conflict mediation, role of the police, drugs, alcohol, all of that. And then that's look at our post-test data. Look at the jumps that have occurred. If you go down even further, I think they're side by side to each other. I think that eh, you don't quite see it there, but you can see twenty to thirty percent shots. And I believe our respect the police, trust the police, close to the police. That's the job of these officers do with the Teen and Police Service Academy, where Chief Aragon going to me to classes personally. Personally going there to build better relationships. Why are better relationships important between youth and police? It reduces crime. When legitimacy goes up, trust goes up, that makes for less crime. So I do have one or two ask. We're only serving about twelve or fifteen of your students now. We need more. We need more in Lamarck High School. We certainly want to see that this fall. And in addition, this is our TAPS Academy class. We have been authorized by the state of Texas that our curriculum was reviewed by TEA. I know those of us from Houston don't think very highly of TEA, but TEA has approved our curriculum to be able to offer one high school credit. So we hope that that can be moved for the fall to be a class for students that are identified by the principal, the associate principal, assistant principal, wraparounds that need this care, need this assistance, need this mentorship, TAPS Academy stands ready. Any questions?
No, it's.
Yeah, I know I had three minutes, but question.
Yes.
Yes.
But it's so good to see you again.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
It's been a long time since I've seen you, about three or four years. Glad to see that you're still committed to the work. Uh, fabulous program. I am a teacher. I've heard from some of the students uh, that have gone through your course. Um, to get it into C I S D, you need to make sure to go through, uh, you have to do the curriculum. Basically, you have to present a proposal before September.
All right.
Uh, really now, so they can have that. But I hope that that happens, that we could have that as an elective course.
Yes.
Um, to offer, I think that would be very beneficial. And I'm, thank you so much for continuing your great work.
Thank you. We will move forward with that, Ms. Morales. Let's make sure we do that to go through all the proper channels.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very good. And now I believe we will have a presentation from College of the Mainland. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To Mayor, Bell, Council members and Mr. Garcia. We want to thank you for your service to the citizens of Lamarck. And also I'd like to commend you on the inside. I found it to be very informative and very proud of the publication. My name is Thomasine Allen.
And my name is Tilly Henson.
And we are here to give you some information about the COM bond. Our momentum is now, and you ask why now? If not now, when? Our students need us today. So, we wanted.
Well, uh, at the beginning, before we begin the, we have three documents. They're very, very informative. They're frequently asked questions about the bond. If you have not received one, we have a few extras. And you can also find this information on the website, W W W dot C O M P A S S dot com. W W W dot C O M P A S S twenty twenty-five dot com.
Okay, and so we're going to go through this rather quickly, but basically we're here to inform you about the bond for May twenty twenty-three. And basically, uh, COM did a master plan in twenty fifteen. And they had a bond advisory committee made of uh, citizens from the area. And basically, this plan was allowing for student growth. Basically, there are some areas that they will be building, uh, and I'll let Tilly talk to you about the library, because she is a librarian.
I should know a little bit of my library after fifty-one years.
And for sure.
But uh, that building is actually fifty-four years old. Uh, we moved it to the building in nineteen seventy, but it was built before then, so it's fifty-four years old. And we have some problems with that building. One problem is students do not have access to the second floor. If students who are disabled do not have access to the second floor, if the elevator's out, that's a problem. We have to either cancel the class, relocate the class, uh, do something to accommodate them. And it's not always easy, because we, we're running out of space. And so we need a new building because we have flooded several times in the library and had to completely renovate, but it was patched upward. So temporary, a band-aid. And the L R C is in the center of the campus, which means all of the buildings now, the new buildings, all of other buildings have easier access to a parking lot. The L R C building is in the center of the campus. Infrastructure problems, cracks in the walkway. I myself have experienced an accident falling because of the cracks in the walkway. And so we need not only uh, run up the new building, but infrastructure around the campus. So we are really pushing this bond. And if you have not been on, still am campus lately, tools are available to any citizen, anyone that wants to come and look at what's happening. It looks better on the inside than the outside. And we know it's beautiful on the outside. So we do encourage you to come and see your tax money at work.
And remember that this library is a community library, so it is open to the public. And it will be built on Monticello, which is the, where the technology.
Same technical, technical patient of the L C. So it will no longer be in the center of campus, so it's next to a parking lot. These are access.
Okay, then the Public Services Center. We're asking for your support in that, and that includes law enforcement, fire protection, emergency medical services. Also, I would like to plug this in. Did you know that they have a program at College of the Mainland that any student that graduates from Lamarck High School, Texas City High School, Santa Fe High School, Hitchcock and Dickinson High School can go to COM for free for two years. So we do appreciate them. It's called the Promise Program. And of course, the Corporate and Continuing Education Center, where people will be coming in and we will be addressing, or they will be addressing all the workforce uh, certificate programs. And then a three-story classroom building, looking at new programs such as hospitality, aerospace, logistics, and additional bachelor degree programs. Right now, College of the Mainland has one uh, bachelor's degree, degree program, and it's in nursing. And then also we can apply, or they, I keep saying we, but I'm very supportive of College of the Mainland. They can also get four more degree programs, bachelor's degree. Okay, and this is how it will look. And basically, it's a two hundred and fifty million dollar bond. And those are the areas that they will be working on. Uh, Tilly, you want to talk about the demolition?
Yeah, we need to emphasize that same as this thing, taxes really would not go up. Well, if you're over sixty-five, your taxes will remain the same. And uh, we have handouts while of these figures, it's hard, you know, we don't want to take up any more of your time, but we do want you to know that the bond that was passed in twenty eighteen, we were very, very, very dutifully careful about how we spent because it was not our money, it was your money. And we were very good stewards of your money. So we will do the same with this. And it's actually would be about sixty-three cents per day for this bond. But those of you who qualified for the taxes to go up would not be getting more than sixty-three cents a weekly cost. We have all that information here, but time will not allow us to go through this every, every aspect.
Okay, so we thank you and we'll stay around if you have any questions for us, and we do appreciate you all.
And we do have a
Present.
Frequently asked questions and package that we passed out to everyone. But we will linger around if you have any other questions and we're out. And our board member was president. Feel like the state doesn't. And.
Sorry. Sorry.
Hello, Doris, I'm Sharon.
All right.
Yes. To support this bond, uh, it says a two hundred and fifty million dollar bond, but an average house, a hundred and seventy thousand dollar house, which I think is probably a medium price in this area. Just like dollars a week. There we have to pay for it. And it's very much needed. We have two buildings that are over fifty years old, badly in need of replacement. And a lot of areas that we need to grow that this bond will accommodate because, so we very much appreciate your support. They're here for the rest of the meeting, uh, and please, if you can help and you want to help, the line yard sign. We have asked this. Uh, that we also have endorsement because you're uh, you're important members of this community, well-respected members of this community. And your support goes a long way. So please help us out and let's get these contacts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Say, if you like what you've seen in the last six years, current, feel love what you've seen with this.
Thank you. Item five, uh, citizens' participation. Limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with a city-related business who signed up to speak to council, limited to three minutes. Item, uh, if wishing to speak, uh, give the mayor or the presiding officer your full legal name, address, and item you wish to speak about. Compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed and personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. If you're visiting with us via phone, you may press star six to mute and unmute yourself, that you may speak. If you are visiting with us on the Zoom platform via smartphone, tablet, or computer, there should be a microphone icon in lower portion of your screen. If you're visiting with us here in person, uh, you may approach the podium to my left, to your right. Again, giving the mayor your name, address, and item you wish to speak about, and you will be heard. Kiara, I'm Kyle, excuse me. Are there any persons online wishing to speak? If there's no one signaling uh, online to speak, we will move now to those that are here uh, in person. The first person would be W T Etheridge. I think that I said that right. Is that right, sir? Yes, sir. Welcome. Uh, your uh, name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is W T Etheridge. Uh, I have my, my uh, legal address in forty-two oh one Black Hawk Drive, Texas City, Texas. I own five different properties in the city of Lamarck. My purpose in speaking today is in reference to the registration fee being charged for rental property. When it first came out, I want to tell you, I was very pleased to see it, happy to support it and paid it promptly. I guess I was one of the first ones to pay it. I noticed this past year that it went up to a hundred dollars, which is a little bit of a shock. But once again, check was in the mail as soon as I got it. I did notice that y'all had reconsidered that because I did get a lot of pushback because I do have a a management company and my family has been here since, Lord, nineteen fifty, because a part of the community in Texas City and in Lamarck area especially also. Uh, so I was kind of glad to see that y'all were reconsidering this. I'm very much in support of it. I think it's a great fee. I think if it funds the inspection of housing and making it better, I'm all for it. You know, that's, that's my business. That's what I like and I like, and I'm very proud of the community. Uh, the thing that I did notice that, uh, when you were sitting, considering reconfiguring the fee is that you said, people like myself have single-family property, you're going to roll it back to fifty. And then multifamily sit back to thirty. And hey, why, why are you discriminating against me just because I own a single-family property? Every property, every door generates income, whether it's a residential, multifamily, or single-family. So I'm a little concerned about that and why we're being singled out. Uh, just like anyone else, when we come in and buy property, and I represent probably another sixteen people that have property in to my management company in Lamarck. All these people take and pull permits. They spend tens of thousands of dollars rehabbing them. Uh, and they, you know, try to compete in the marketplace because rental market's a tough market right now. And you better have your property in a shape. And so that's why I was very excited about the program, like, hey, this slum stuff we've had in Texas City, Lamar, Gauss County, I'm up for it. Let's get rid of it. Let's move on. And get it behind us. But I think the fees should be equal. If what we're trying to do is drive a cost need or funding for the city, then maybe we need to add twenty dollars to everybody's fee that owns piece of property in the city. I'm not sure how well that would be reacted by everybody, but uh, you know, it, to be fair to everyone, whether it's residential or commercial, you know, let's put a fee down that would be funded, let us do it, take care of it. But maybe if we spread it over everybody that has ownership of property, not just investors, that would send a better message to people that want to invest in Lamarck. And it would certainly help us get a lot of people, because I could probably drive you around today and show you people that own their houses, you know, that's their house. It's not rental and it's deplorable. You know, and that irritates me. And so I would like to see us, you know, move forward. I think maybe there is a basis for that fee for everybody. Let's all share it. Let's share equally the expense, let's share the burden, let's move it forward. So that's pretty much my thought. Bye.
Thank you, sir.
Bill will tell you, when I get up at my robbery class and chief too, they always comment and say, Phil, well, he said you could talk for a second.
Well, Mr. Etheridge, you did well tonight, so thank you. Uh, Clarence Caldwell. Welcome, Ms. Caldwell. As always, name and address, please. How you doing?
Good evening, everybody. My name is.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Clarence Caldwell, there's six oh three Ferris Street. And the, what I have to talk about today is at the corner of Ferris Street and Volney, there's an address that there, there at the corner that the tree limbs are overgrown. And I've talked about this more than once. And when people come down Volney to turn on Prairie, a lot of people turn short because they can't see. And there's many times, there are a lot of people, including me, that almost got my vehicle hit because they can't see because the people there that's living in that trailer that own those food trucks, they don't want to cut them limbs and stuff like that. And it's starting to get old and it needs to be done. The second issue is on the opposite side of Prairie Street, which is, is a vacant lot, but it did limbs that are over hanging in the street. And, you know, my, you know, people cars, you know, my car is a low driving car and I have to right there avoid hitting that thing because those limbs are hanging over. And can't somebody right there get the property owner or somebody to trim that mess back? And the, this is a, this is a major issue. This is dealing with the garbage cans. Okay, I know we got yellow ones for recycle and I know we got the regular ones for regular trash. But as of late, we've been having some storms that have come through. And when the wind picks up, it blows those trash cans over where it tears up everybody's, you know, lids. So what the people's going to do is they're going to put that trash in those trash cans that have those yellow things. I know the garbage people right there see it. Why they just right there just, you know, pick that garbage up because what ends up happening is it attracts all kinds of feral animals like horses, dogs, cats, and everything. Then that trash is everywhere. I mean, that's just common sense. And these people don't know where, if we go to try to get another trash can, the city charges us for those trash cans. But that's not our fault. If the wind blows those trash cans over, it tears the lids up. That's not our fault. So something needs to be done about that, you know, tell the waste manager because they ain't doing no recycling. Tell them to enter that garbage and stuff. And the last issue is the same thing that I talked about last year, the same thing I talked about the last time I was here. And on my security cameras, I seen when the vehicle, the city truck.
Finish your statement.
I seen when the vehicle drove up, but they didn't even get out. All they did is stayed in their vehicle. They did not clean out them, them ditches out. And they did not come back with their bag dirt. How hard is it right there? And the people that's in the corner?
Yeah, I got you, Ms. Caldwell.
Okay, but
I got you.
But when we get a chance, I want to show you something that has some pictures of something that happened. And it's the same stuff.
I, I, I got you, Ms. Caldwell. I got, I got to move you on. You could, you could talk to me after the meeting if you like. Thank you, though.
No, no, no. You just, just
Okay.
God, I mean, you can.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Robert Mischich. Welcome, Robert. Name and address, as always.
Robert Mischich, twenty-four North Curly, Lamarck. Noticed online, our last update on our debt services was in twenty twenty-one. That report hasn't been updated since then that's posted, and those need to be updated. Also, we need project tracking posted. Supposedly, we have all this grant money, but where is it? Have we received it? Or have we spent our match? And where is this project tracking app online so that we can tell? Right now, we may as well not have any of those grants because there's no way of finding what we've got, what's been spent, if any's been spent, because we certainly haven't seen the results. The last thing I want to speak about is my councilman is Councilman Carlson for District C. Already on his social media, has been posted that he has accepted another job and I congratulate him on that and I wish him well. It will be into the state of Oregon as a fire chief for a city up there. And I wish him the best, but his start date is listed as April seventeenth. So at the next city council meeting, I would expect that y'all would call for a special election for him because to, for him to remain on council remotely by Zoom cannot be, is, cannot be tolerated. It doesn't matter whether your family's still here or anything. What if you were single? The issue is that you're no longer a resident. You've taken a full-time job in another state and you must step down. And so that is my request, that that be done. And you need to talk with our councilman. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Bill McGarvey.
Welcome, sir. Name and address.
Hi, I'm Bill McGarvey. I live at eight oh eight Buttonwood Drive in Texas City, Texas, West Texas City. And I'm glad to be here tonight. I sort of got my three minutes in earlier. My intention was to promote our bond that College of the Mainland is having. And I think I already said what I wanted to say about that. But Ms. Allen, Ms. Hanson, I think will be here. And please, if you do support the bond, get with them and let them know how you can help. Yard signs or endorsements. If the city council would like to make a proclamation in support, in support of the bond, that would be wonderful and we'd really appreciate that and that would be very helpful. But I also want to sort of echo what my friend Bill Etheridge said. I'm also a landlord and I own fifteen homes in Lamarck. And so I am very much in favor of this agenda item to reduce the, the fees we have to pay on our rent houses. So, so please, thank you for reconsidering that. They, they went up, they more than tripled this last year. And I appreciate you talking about bringing them, them down again. I think the other thing that you could do, I think for our benefit, is, is while you're discussing this, articulate the reason behind it and why you're asking us to pay these fees. Because honestly, I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm paying them, but I, no one's ever told me what, why I am paying them. But that would be helpful to me. And, and again, thank you all for letting me speak.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I think that's all for our citizens' participation. We move now to item six. Minutes, special meeting minutes, March, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Regular meeting minutes, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. I will entertain a motion.
So will
Is there a second?
A second.
Are there any corrections, omissions? Additions? Here you go. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Item seven, ordinances, discussion possible action regarding approving seven-one ordinance number, letter O dash two zero two three dash zero 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 two, amending chapter fourteen, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article eleven, entitled Registration for Rental Units Required, Making Various Findings and Provisions Related to the Subject and Providing for an Effective Date. Caesar, did you want to comment on this item?
No, staff is present to answer any questions you may have. The recommended changes have been made. Gus took the lead on making these edits. The reductions were made as, as was recommended by council. We're entertaining any additional questions that the entire council may have.
Also, do we have any questions for Caesar or for Gus?
Mayor?
Yes, go for it.
Just to pick up on Bill McGarvey's question, as to the reason, a part of it comes from you in previous meetings, Mayor. Initially, Lamarck had a situation, and I'm aware of it, of really non-maintenance on rental properties in town. And so the term slum landlord comes to mind. And in that process, we had situations where there was perhaps a fire that occurred or other busted pipes, weather events, and there was no way of reaching anybody that's responsible for the property and to fill in. I know on behalf of Red Cross, we sometimes have this problem on rental properties that we're providing services to clients. And as, as part of that, there was a suggestion of this rental ordinance that be passed that at a minimum, at a minimum, is providing per the permitting fee that you fill out a form that contains the name, address, and telephone owners of the owner or alternatively, the property manager, the person that's responsible for the property, and a number that is available for, at any twenty-four hour period in order that someone can be contacted in the event of an emergency condition. And there's also part of this, a written certification by the landlord that every rental unit is equipped with a smoke detector device for proper working in proper working order. The, so I think that's the, at a, at a minimum, the requirements and the bases of the law in terms of some historical perspective, if I'm accurate, Mayor, in that, on that side. The second item with regard to the fee, and I, I did read this on the registration fees. And we had some previous discussion on this, is I, I tend to also, for in terms of simplicity, is to say that the fee should be, in my opinion, a flat fee of fifty dollars or alternatively, a flat fee of thirty dollars, whichever way you go. But a flat fee is, is the point that I'm making. And it's just less administration and, and just simplicity. Always come to mind in terms of keep it simple and and so that's, that's my thought. And the last item, which I didn't, wasn't too clear about, well, and Gus, you might help me on this. What's the penalty in the event that there's a violation? I didn't really see anything to that effect.
It would, it would generally be, I believe it is section one point seven or one dash seven of the city's code of ordinances. A violation of those ordinances punishable. That's the overall overarching penalty provision.
Well, therefore, I would suggest and recommend that we reference that so that, once again, simplicity, no, everyone understands what's the possible outcome or result if you don't comply with the ordinance. And then finally, I didn't understand why we have an effective date of December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three when I was hoping that we would implement this changeover as soon as possible because we have people and even new rental properties being constructed at this time. And, and I think that they should be benefit from the lower fee or make it, make it applicable within a forty-five day period after approval or something like that. But I didn't, I didn't understand why at the end of the year.
Sure, I can speak to that. So to, to answer your first question, one point seven does have a general penalty, but if we can definitely add that reference in to the ordinance. As far as the effective date of December thirty-first, the current rental registration ordinance is in effect and it has a fee attached to it. We put December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three because the rental registration, you have to re-register every year. So this change would be effective for the following year. The alternative would be, we, we felt that you would essentially, you would have people who paid the fee be having paid the fee and you'd have people who didn't pay the fee paying a lesser fee. And we felt that that was
That's basically getting everyone off on the same cycle.
Correct, correct. It was an attempt to treat everyone the same.
Well, let me ask you this.
And, and, and I would say we would defer to council, but that was just how it came from staff.
If I came in now in April, May, would my fee be prorated?
No.
Okay.
We, we, we do not pro, and I would have to defer to Kathleen on this, but generally speaking, the city does not prorate the rental fee, whether you come in to rent on January one or December fifteenth, you pay the fee.
And it all expires at the same date, then? Is that how we've set it up?
Yes.
So you can come in on November one and pay the full fee and then have to pay a full fee at the end of December as well?
That's correct. And, and that's the way the program has operated.
We don't have any fees that are, that are prorated.
Okay.
Um, oh, sorry.
I can understand that, that logic. And once again, I think that the core out of this is, is the reduced fee and uniformity. That is number one objective. What we're discussing, in my mind, and that's what I was urging. So those are my questions. Thank you.
I had two things I wanted to ask about. Number one, I, I just want to reiterate that I, I am still in favor of the original hundred dollar fee. The, I, you know, I do take value in all the commentary from the council last time and the people that are here today. I think that's all valuable. And I'm certainly, you know, not going to die on the hill of the hundred dollar fee. But to the, the question that you so wisely asked about, like, what is this for? Number one, I do think it would be wise of us to, and maybe this happened already, so forgive me if I'm speaking out of turn, but a letter that can go along with the first time we changed this round of fees. I, I'm, I'm sure, I know you've sent out letters before to them, like, when it all started. And I don't know the process for how many letters have gone out, but it does seem like it would be helpful to include a letter that's something from you, Kathleen, you know, or, or city management or whatever, that's kind of gives some bullet points of like, here's why we have to raise the fee. And there are those reasons, are the same reasons why I am still in favor of the, of the higher fee just because we all know what the predictions are for more and more rental properties on this, in this community that are going to need to all be held to the same standard. And that means people who go and inspect them. It means staff. And we have to pay that staff money. And so I feel like this is a perfect example of the kind of program that it has needs and we can attach a fee to those needs that then pay for the personnel that manage it and make sure that we have more property owners who are holding themselves accountable, like some of the gentlemen that are here tonight. That said, though, I thought that was a, I think it was an interesting question that one of our speakers brought up, which is why the difference in a fee, you know, if we were to say what, what's on the proposal tonight is a thirty versus a fifty. Kathleen, what is the thinking behind why we would have charged less for apartment complexes?
The, the, well, actually, there's very few apartment complexes in the city of Mark. If I may add, I'm familiar with both of you and thank you all very much for your comments and everything. And I'm familiar with your properties. And I can say that these two gentlemen, whenever there's been an issue, they've taken care of it. And we do appreciate that.
Yeah, of course.
There are very, very few apartment communities. I would say eighty to ninety percent of the rental registrations are single-family homes. I think that's what you, you, you all, so. They, the process is not just merely sending out an application and explaining the fees. I mean, we send out the application, we send out the ordinance, we send out the tenant and landlord rules that we'd like everyone to get along and go by and stay. But behind the scenes, we're doing pretty much a title search on each one of these properties because they sell and they don't come and tell us when they sell their properties, which, you know, they're supposed to, or they're supposed to tell the new owners to do it. So we have to go every year and we have to look these properties up one by one, all three to four, five thousand of them. And make sure that we're sending a letter to the, to the correct owner or to the correct management company. So there's a lot of time involved. So there's a lot of time in involved in that and not even mention the paperwork. We do send out letters. We send out a letter there. In October, we send out a letter again in December, and then the ones that don't register, we send another letter out after January.
Mm-hmm.
So um, the difference is because the majority of the ones we center to the single-family homes and um to try and cover the staff fees for all that, too.
Mm-hmm.
Postage, printing, you name it.
So is it, am I understanding correctly in in assessing that the reason there was there is a higher fee associated in this proposal for single families, just there is more work associated with a single-family household? Okay. Because, sorry, I'm just gonna like beat the horse, because you don't have to look up the title so many times and do all of the other work associated with it, because it's all in one.
As in we do in all the homes, when we have three hundred, say, two hundred and eighty-four rental homes, like in Camilla Home Zones, or hundred and eighty-four, I'm sorry. We have to look those up because they're starting to sell a few of them.
Mm-hmm.
But then there, those people are renting them also.
I see.
So we, every year, we have to re-look these things up and we basically are doing a title search. And I think you all know what a title search costs.
Yeah, and so the slightly higher fee is due to the fact that it is associated with more labor.
And there's more turnover, there's more turnover.
Okay, all right. Thanks. I didn't understand that from last time.
Except for these gentlemen, they don't ever turn over their property.
Yeah. Um, uh, I just wanted to ask again, because going back to what I said originally, which is, you know, I still feel like us going, you know, ha, you know, I understand it's easy for me to talk about, you know, wanting to have higher fees because I'm coming from a different perspective. I'm not a landlord. I don't own properties. I'm coming at it from concern about the overall well-being of the community, plus taking care of our staff, our city staff, right, and ensuring that we're not asking something of city staff that we are then not supporting them in doing. And I think for me, that's the biggest hiccup for me, is that we're not putting an expectation about what the the next phase of our rental registration will look like, particularly in the projected growth over the next few years. And they're just drowning because they can't pay for it, or because we can't hire the staff. Um, so I'm curious, like, again, so if if we, I don't know, with these fees, what do you expect to happen?
With the reduction in fees, which I spoke with Gus over it, um, we're trying to streamline this process as much as we possibly can to cut the cost of it. Your main cost is your staff time.
Mm-hmm.
And then you have your postage. We can't control that. We can control our staff time. So we're, we're trying to streamline it so that we're not using as much time as in sending out all the letters. Because Gus and I discussed it, where we've done this every year from the very beginning, we've sent letters out. Every year to remind everyone, at this point, everyone should know. I know these gentlemen know because they're always the first to get registered. And if we could streamline some of that, I think we could work with this cost. But the city's growing.
Mm-hmm.
And and, you know, we just, we could just see how this works and to see where we are with it at the at the end of the year. Um, but
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, I just, it's really, it's really, it's really difficult to stand here and say, yeah, we can do it for this much, but and then turn around and have to go.
Yeah, well, I would say, I mean, I I would, I'm happy to be quiet and listen to what the rest of the council has to say, but I do um, I really do respect the, you know, the concerns that you guys came with last time about your citizens, you know, really having heartburn and a lot of concern over this. Um, so I would say if we move forward with these fees, again, I think they should be higher, but if we move forward with these fees, this has to be something that's addressed.
We have to get, something has to get, either we don't send the letters out anymore to save us costs or it's something, we have to do something because we can can't continue with the way the program's growing and then and it it what the fees are. So if we reduce them, that's fine, we'll we'll make do, but it's going to be difficult, but if we reduce the amount of letters we have in the postage amount and all that we have to send out, then you know, there'd be a tremendous help. And then I've streamlined staff as much as I can to do it. So, because this doesn't involve just permitting, this involves code compliance, too. Because when this program kicks off every year, everyone is involved in doing all these property searches. Code is involved in it all year long, because when they open a case, they check to see if it's rental property and to see if it's registered. And if it's not, then we start that process over. So it's we were going to do whatever council wishes, so, but if it's, we need to look at some of this. I think Gus and I have discussed some of it. When it comes to the letters and everything, so.
Mm-hmm.
Kathleen. The issue for me is that we have many potential rental properties, but very few participating rental properties. I think we're at about fifty percent is what you said.
It's less, I hadn't even looked today on the count, but um probably fifty, sixty percent and more coming, and there's not, those are not even included yet.
And so I I really feel like we need to capture that revenue. That should be our primary focus. Capture the revenue that we leave
Mm-hmm.
in those properties because we have not been diligent, and I'm not saying that you haven't been diligent. I'm saying we, right, as a councilman, haven't been diligent in pursuing that. And I think that that's the first step a- as it as it sits for me. Secondly, I think there there perhaps is some value in the statements of these gentlemen. Yeah, they are the real-time, real owners of rental property in our city, participating uh in in our in our program. And so I'd be willing to understand, to try to understand how some of their recommendations would work within our current ordinance moving forward. I don't know that that's something that we can contemplate tonight, new information. Um, and and it throws us off of schedule. Uh, but I would certainly like to hear about that, and I would like for that to be part of how we move this ordinance moving forward. Um, and so I'll stop there and to see if anyone else wants to add any any other comments. Uh, but I definitely think, Caesar, we need to start capturing the other forty percent, full stop.
Did you have some things you wanted to respond to? I saw that you.
No, sir, actually, I was trying to draw attention that uh, Councilman Carlson had his hand raised.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike. Uh, let's let Michael go and and then Joe will pick you back up.
Okay, um, I understand what the gentlemen are saying about the, it should be fair across the board. Um, but looking at the ordinance itself, under uh, section sorry about that, um, under section fourteen dash four two five, it talks about the number two. It talks about the multifamily apartments and duplexes, so they're getting charged thirty dollars per unit. So if there's a duplex, that's sixty dollars, triplex, that's ninety dollars. So I I see what you're saying with the fifty. And if we want to raise it to fifty across the board, that's fine with me. Um, the only issue I have, and it's all semantics, is the line above it talks about shall pay an application fee of the whole intent, my original intent was to get rid of the application fee period. That was it. But this has evolved into basically reworking the entire document. Um, but that's, I mean, like I said, that's semantics, the word application fee. Um, that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Michael. Joe, do you want to add?
Yes, sir. That's interesting information, Mayor. I didn't know about the the percentage that was missing here.
Well, they brought it, they've talked about it quite a bit.
Uh, I did not hear that, yeah. Okay. They may talk.
Yeah, I'm just, I just wanted on the record that they've brought it to us. I didn't want anyone to think they haven't told us.
So that's first time for me, test to do that. Okay, so uh, the uh but in terms of the issues, I guess this is where Lamar, little little Lamar uh does have to do better in terms of of our savings. I looked at something similar for the city of Austin. All this done is is done online.
Mm-hmm.
The the this, this whole application, this whole registration should be put online. Uh, the, and you also, for purposes of notice, and this is something that we can work with our city attorney on, a landlord in the documentation can also indicate that for purposes of notice, they accept email as the uh as acceptable means of notice as well, too, in terms of information. So we don't have to send out and the the, you know, the stamps and like the stamps and the envelopes and things of that nature. Save staff time as well, too. So these are little tweaks that I would be involved in, what I would be doing. Um, I I I think there's merit in maybe as a, on the fee side, the the higher fee of the hundred that was previous year versus a uniform fee of fifty, maybe, and that is the the compromise there with this other uh gap that we have in terms of units that haven't been reported yet. Uh, and uh, and then take a look at it year by year in terms of income being generated for for budget purposes uh as well on that side. And by the way, last item, I was so impressed with the city of League City, who has a type of of rental ordinance, but it's applicable only to rental apartments, apartment units. Uh, I only found out about this at this last fire that I responded to about two or three weeks ago. They now require that for purposes of the rental apartments, which you said we, we don't have a lot of, but it's something of the future. I just bring this up. They they require the tenants and the the apartment owners to go ahead and require a a renter's insurance policy on it. And so then the event that there is a fire or other natural, there's there's a component there that covers them for housing for some period of time.
And they do that in the lease.
Yeah, uh, exactly.
Protects them.
Exactly, exactly. And that's something that I'd like for us to, as as we in the future, take a look at as well, too. On that side, but um, I don't know, and if, I don't know if, yes, I didn't even say, but if not, I'm, I'd like to um, propose that we um accept the the uh, the proposed ordinance with the amendment of a uniform fee of fifty dollars. Fifty dollars and
Motion is on the floor with a, an amended uniform fee of fifty dollars.
And add the section with regard to the uh, what of the violation.
Uh, with an added section in regards to the violation.
What are the consequences?
Did you get it, Karen?
The uniform fee of fifty dollars and adding a violation.
The section with regard to consequences of violation.
I have a question. On the uniform fee of fifty dollars, you mean just every, for each just fifty dollars a crop for everything? So if I, if somebody has an apartment complex, it's just one fifty dollar fee? Okay.
Yeah.
Are you, are you meaning per unit, right?
Per 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 the unit.
Okay, okay.
If you have a one hundred and fifty unit apartment complex, it would be fifty dollars per.
Yeah, I was just making sure I understood.
Yes.
Right, did I get it?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's right.
So, friends, is it? There's a second, oh. Any further discussion from council? Any further discussion from council? Karen, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Uh.
You opposed?
Nay.
Item seven two, ordinance number, letter O dash two zero two three dash zero 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 three, amending the city's zoning map and comprehensive plan by changing, changing the zoning regulations of real property commonly known as fifty-four oh one FM seventeen sixty-five, Lamar, Texas. Caesar.
Hmm, thank you. Um, Cal, could you pull this up? I see Kathleen approaching. This item's here before you um, for your consideration. It is a request for a zoning. Ms. Kathleen?
Yeah, they just asked, they asked for a rezon of this property so they can open a business park. If you go to the other page, Cal. They're rezoning it from single-family residential to commercial. So it's going to be a business strip-type park. Now, the development side, we're, we're working on that right now, but this is one of the proposed uses for it, and we did send out the two hundred feet letters to all the residents and um we got no responses and negative response from anyone and planning to zoning past the unanimously. I think it would be a good use for that neighborhood.
That's that's Texas Avenue.
Uh, it's across near the fire department. It's it's a lot right near the fire department behind um Delaney Cove.
Okay. Behind, well, so. We'll pull it up on Google Earth here real quick in a second, but essentially, it it, excuse me, from what I was thinking, it it abudes to where the Drainers District um, line that comes through.
Yeah.
So right between Delaney and two double oh four, across Texas Ave, past the entrance, there's a little section there that it's a pretty nice-sized open part of land.
It's two acres.
So I I still don't visualize.
We're going to show it on Google Earth.
He's trying to see if it's A or B.
Yeah.
But district is in.
It is District Day.
Okay.
Yes, it does fall right adjacent to the entrance to Delaney Cove. The entrance to Delaney Cove.
The Texas Avenue.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. How many, how many uh co- commercial spaces?
They've not submitted all the the site plan yet for it or the the building plans yet for it.
So we don't know square footage, we don't know usage.
Not yet, but it's going to be retail, business park type. It's not going to be a automotive repair, anything like that.
For for
They're there, there's for doctors' offices and things like that.
A que- question. I know that this is, this is our, let's, I call it for lack of a better way of describing Lamar. We have our, our classic Lamar classic and then our newer Lamar, right? It's different people call it different things, but maybe Old Town Lamar versus uh, new, new Lamar, planned development Lamar, uh, others. So so as part of that, in terms of um, say, say uh Woodl- Woodlands Development and Sugar Land, the architecture that for even the these sort of independent business ventures is is pretty consistent, right, in terms of of the, of the buildings. So that's my question. Uh, we approve this, but I I'm curious to note, to what extent has there been, you know, some consistency in terms of the architecture?
Well, all you're approving is the rezon.
Yes, just the rezon.
The development process takes kicks in, and it's when we have a design criteria manual and we have certain uses and specifications in that zoning and in our design criteria manual of what we will allow here.
Yeah.
And they will submit what they want to do, and if it doesn't fit in our criteria, then they they can resubmit.
So we do have that authority now in terms of the of the architecture, the signage.
Everything, it's all there. It's all in there.
Okay.
But that's where we, they, we step in and we start regulating what they could do there. And with this area, this is something that the they could, people could use. They don't need auto repair shops or anything like that, but they do need a business park, per se. Doctors' offices, things or things like this.
Hmm.
So, um, but like I said, they'll submit that to us and then we'll review it and see if it matches what our criteria is. If it doesn't, then they go back to the drawing board and bring back what they can. And if they don't, and they decide it's just not worth it, then the rezon stands until someone, they've settled the property or they they follow through with our criteria.
Mm-hmm.
That's what Development Services does.
What's zone now?
It's own residential right now.
Residence.
That's because of Delaney Cove and the subdivisions.
It's residential, it's, but it's across the street from Delaney Cove.
It's actually
Actually, right next.
It's right next to it.
Mm-hmm.
It's right, it's right. This is the aerial. So that's Texas Ave that flows down under, to the left is bottom left, that's where the fire station is.
See the red roof? That's the fire station.
Right, so if you go to the right, you hit Delaney, you go to the left, you hit two double Right. So if you go to the right, you hit Delaney, you go to the left, you hit two double oh four, that's right where the drainage area is.
Also, this is right in the middle of the, it's actually within the subdivision.
No.
No?
It's on the edge. It's right next to the subdivision, but right on the edge right there.
But, but the other side subdivision as well. Is that Delaney Cove on, on that side?
You're right. It's like, it is like, it's just alongside the main.
That is a very awkward situation. And I don't know that other communities would, would allow something like that.
I, yeah, I don't.
There's, I think there's a need there with all the house talks. I really do.
It, it may be a need, but other communities would have those commercials, uh, uh, opportunities right there on two double oh four. Or right there at, at the intersection of Delaney. This is, this, this is just, would be sticking out of what is clearly a residential area. In a way that even Dollar General does not. That's the way I see it. Um.
They are more pro this than they were Dollar General.
They are.
I have a question. Um. The question I have is, if I remember right, that used to be a. Used to be a, uh, some type of oil drilling rig there.
There used, there was a pipeline. It's been capped off.
Right. But why was that even there if it's zone residential? That doesn't make sense.
There's pipelines all over the city of Lamar and.
Right. Why do they have, why do they have a, a pump right there and it's zone residential?
But it, it's not a pump. It's capped off.
Well, now it's capped off, but.
Two to three hundred feet.
Right. Now it is, but.
It's no.
When I'm.
It has been for years. It's, it, it's not in use. Hasn't been used for years. We asked that same question.
Okay. I'm just curious because.
Yeah.
That's, that shouldn't have happened if it's zone residential. That's only, that's my concern and I feel the same way with the mayor and everyone else. I mean, that's, that's residential. Why take it from, why take the aesthetics from it?
Well, I, that is my district and so, and I represent those people in that district. And some of them have, have concerns about not having available things in their district and, and there are some people that are in favor. Of, of this. Why don't we, Mayor, um, maybe ask some of the residents per se to see how they feel about it. We can bring that up.
We sent out letters today, every one within two hundred feet.
And no one said anything.
And for them to voice their opinions.
Cause it didn't come up in the HOA meeting that we had, which is kind of concerning. Me personally, I think that, that area because of the rooftops, we do need more viable stores in that area. And that, not just that, but industry as well, because we have another, uh, subdivision that's coming in right across the street. And I think we do need some medical offices. I think we do need, uh, some things that will cater to them. So as a representative of this district, I think that I'm in favor of that. Other reasons.
That's, that's what I, how I felt. Of course, it's not my decision, but.
Yeah.
And Delaney Cove would let you know when they don't like something. They let you.
It would be nice, I think, um, cause I, I feel both ways. I mean, for me, whenever I see something like that, I'm always immediate. I mean, it's a, it's a property that otherwise, I mean, it's not like there's going to be more houses there.
Right.
Um, cause it's been carved out of the subdivision. You know, I'm always like, put a park on it. Um, but. But, uh, cause I would argue that that's also needed.
Yeah.
But that is definitely a compelling argument that, you know, um. You know, as much as I always feel like we should be thinking less about, well, can we put a business there and can we? Put enhanced green space here. At the same time, the people who live there are going to want some amount of commerce nearby. Um, maybe, uh. I think it would be compelling for us to hear from more. So if, if you didn't, if you said it didn't come to the HOA. It did. That like, I mean, you know, the letter goes out, but that's not that many, you know, homes overall.
Within two hundred feet. It's.
Right.
Most of the time we get responses.
And they do, they do respond.
Could, could it be, you know, postponed long enough for this to be brought to an HOA meeting and then come back? So the council feels like it's heard more from us.
Gus to speak on that.
Sure, sure.
Just matter of fact, one other thing, uh, to Kansas when you had that meeting. My concern is of course the residential, but as with the Amazon situation. And they're already not complying, as we know, with the traffic flow that was promised to us. They said the trucks would be entering from the frontage road off of I forty five. They're not doing that. You go over there. I sat there. They're coming down Delaney Road. They go in there. They park in that side. Okay, that's, that's number one. But the, these sort of changes. Also warrant because of the increase, that new subdivision there on the other side. Warrant traffic, traffic surveys here in my mind. What's, what's going to result in terms of, I saw the, the parking that was. Laid out in the map over here. Um, but that, that is also a concern of mine. What's the additional burden that's going to be put? On a two lane highway there, uh, in that area.
Well, the traffic, if, if we want to require that, then we need to require that in our process, but this is only two acres. And this is, is. This is the rezone part. This is not the development part. So those kinds of things are handled in the development part, kind of like with the event center. We're waiting on the traffic analysis. We're waiting on all these other analysis also.
Yeah.
And, and this is not a huge development.
But that, that map. Why does it show? Isn't, it's the drainage ditch that's there.
Yes, it is.
But I didn't see the drainage ditch on all these drawings. I saw a road. That's what was throwing me off.
It's immediately, right in this image right now would be immediately to the left of the image. So right to the left of that is where the drainage district would.
So they're, they're going to have the drainage district. There's the road. And then the strip center? See how, how that is?
Great. You see that line there? That would represent the actual drainage district. So it would be the entrance that looks vertical now would be Texas Ave. So they would enter and exit through Texas Ave.
Yeah, but that's, that's once again, that's why I was looking at that. That's a four lane drawing there. That's why I was, I still was so confused when I saw that. There's four lanes on that. It's not a four lane. It's deceptive. Unaccurate.
That's just a rendering.
But I, I understand that, but those are the.
They're not changing Texas Avenue. I can assure you of that.
They did make that look.
So if this is just a zoning change, why be so, what will then, why be so presumptuous as to add? A rendering and an incorrect rendering at that.
That's causing problems.
The rendering is caused, well, we didn't need to see the incorrect rendering.
It's, it's part of the process that you're seeing everything that they, they submitted.
Yeah.
And they, and all the developers submit their pretty drawings and everything.
I, I get that. I get that, but it's to Joe's point. It's not accurate.
Well, that's not exactly what I was going to look, because they've not submitted the exact plans yet. Uh, because they can't until they get a rezone.
Would, would a better location be at the very end there of Texas Ave and two double oh four? Because that, because with two, because once they go and give the renderings. The architect drawings, they could have two entrances, one off Texas and one off two double oh four. Would that be a better location?
As if they wanted to buy that location, sure. And, and someone else owns that.
And if I may, while the renderings are on the screen, the only thing that's before the council to consider is a rezone. So the layout of it is not, while informative, is not before the council.
Right.
Let me speak to that's, I, I, that's didn't bother even when, no, 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 Gus, I understand. All I'm saying is that I kind of went through this when I first joined council. When Deera, Deera was here and we made that big change and I was saying, and it's still on it. I haven't brought it back, right? Because it's such, you know how mu- how many changes were made? Well, I know Kathleen knows. It's about this thick and all those changes. On there and I, e- each day, that's a great little thing. It's, uh, uh, going through all that, but, but. But really, when we make, when we make zoning changes in my mind, we're already opening the door to whatever. We're, we're, we're helping somebody else's plans. And I don't think we're giving it the, the time. I took a picture and I'm sending it to you, Kathleen, and I'll send it to you, Mr. Your manager. It was in Webster and right at the corner there on the feeder road. Where, uh, they've just finished up the construction. There's a big sign and says, this, this is a zoning, proposed zoning change here. And I took a photo of saying, that's what we need. That's what's missing in our city. Every time we have these events for the public as a whole to see, this is what's being proposed. Because the reality is, I'm, I'm reading my mail of two weeks ago, truthfully, and God forbid, you know, other things, but, but. But like I said, it's opening a door right now and I'm not comfortable with that because of the increased traffic flow and. That's a residential. That's just my.
So, so I would s- suggest that we would probably, because to, to Kim's point, maybe there's some residents that, that, that we need to hear from. Um. And, and we don't have to act on this tonight necessarily, do we? Will the world end if we table it? Kathleen, you're acting like the world will end if we table it.
No, I'm just, there's so much done report to this point. We're just doing a rezoning.
And.
And we don't, and the traffic.
But perhaps, perhaps, perhaps the council may deem it not be in the best interest of the citizens of this great city to rezone it. But we don't know. We don't know yet. We see a building in the middle of a four lane highway and all we know is that's not a four lane highway. That's all we know. So I would suggest that we table it. Um, anytime any member of our council is uncomfortable, the rule has been table it.
Okay.
Really?
Wherever the wishy counsel is.
Normal customers for us to bring it back the next meeting. We could table it and if we're allowed to do so, uh, in this case, it may be a time when we have a chance to sit down with the HOA.
Absolutely.
Have enough time.
Yeah. I think we should, we should do that.
Yeah.
To Kim's point, and I think we should, we should look at what this would do to our traffic flow to Joe's. Um, and what it will do to our aesthetics, because these commercial structures undoubtedly start to have issues with, with, uh, not only code enforcement, but, but issues with. Uh, being clean, right? A lot of our commercial areas, there, there are a lot of trash, uh, areas around those. What's that going to do to that neighborhood? What's that going to do to that, that, that subdivision? You know, everybody wants commercial development until they realize that there are other things that are associated with that commercial development that will potentially. And that could potentially lower your property value. Did they think about that? We don't know. Perhaps we should explore that.
And, and just, just by the one other thing, and I, I look at these things. I didn't see on this, on the rendering. Where the, the commercial dumpsters were going to be.
They, they were, they were on there.
I, I, I look for, we should point them out to me. I was, I didn't see them.
That's part of the process when they submit their plans.
Oh.
Right.
There's certain criteria for dumpster enclosures and everything and locations and all.
All right. Thank you.
Let, let, let me say this before you, you jump in, Ken. Lamar is definitely a pro business city and we're open for business. Uh, we are certainly as, uh, a city that will consider. The desires of our citizenry in that effort for if our citizens aren't behind us, doesn't matter how pro business we are. They won't support what we're trying to do for them. Go ahead, Kim.
I agree. That's basically what I.
That's what you were saying. I took it.
Cause I don't want anyone to think that we, we, we don't want to promote business.
Right.
And I know in that area, we don't have a lot of commercial businesses there at all. And that is a concern because that's where most of our growth will be in that area. And it makes sense to, to have something like that. But I, I don't feel comfortable. I mean, I'm ready to vote on it, but let me check with Cory and our president, Atlantic Hole, and let's see.
I think when it comes to the HOA, I'll let Gus to speak to that. I mean, if the citizens, we sent the notices out to.
Right, right. You did.
And. And like I said, most of our citizens in those subdivisions do, they are, they do speak their voice.
They do.
And we listen to what they say. It wouldn't have got to this point if, if we weren't listening to what they said.
Correct. Yeah.
So, and.
But can we table some?
And now the HOA is in their input on this. I'm not sure.
Gus, did you want to speak to that?
The HOA is, as is any other citizen, is free to come and publicly comment on this item as well as any public hearing, uh, that the council has.
Very good.
Thank you.
I, I believe we should, uh, do our due diligence, uh, and table this until we can get some answers from our, our community and from, uh. From some of the things that, that may approach him brought up. Uh, so I, I'll entertain a motion to table.
I'm with.
A second?
A second. Is there a direction on what, how you would like that input? Is in letters sent again or how would you like that me to do that?
Uh, well, I believe that it's, it, it, Councilwoman Yansey is going to work with Caesar to get some input from the HOA.
Okay.
Uh, as well as work with, uh, Mayor Pro Tem to get, get many of his questions resolved. As far as traffic flow and things of that nature.
Okay.
So we have a motion to table and a second on the floor. There is no discussion on the table. All those in favor? Uh, now we're moving to item seven, item eight resolutions. Unless otherwise specified, the city manager is authorized to execute all necessary documents. Upon final, final approval by the city attorney, eight, one resolution number R dash two, zero, two, three, dash zero, zero, two, three. Award of bid to JSS Construction for construction of a twelve inch waterline on Texas Avenue. From FM seventeen sixty five, from I forty five to Newman Road, phase one of the Stonewall. Waterline Improvement Project written.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. This is a bid award, um, recommendation is to JSS Construction. We did receive twelve bids. That was a, um. Good quantity of bids on this project. Um, they came in with a low price of two hundred eight thousand fourteen. Um, there were some other bids in the two hundred thousand range. The average was, was a little bit over three hundred thousand. So it is a good bid. Some of the numbers came in. Um. Different as far as mobilization. Um, this, this project's got some, um, boring on it. Those prices vary a little bit by depending on the, the contractor. That's able to do that kind of work. Our city engineer, Atticode, did reference checks and checked the firm. They feel it's a good bid and recommending award it. JSS Construction for. Joy one fourteen. I will point out, just, just so we all know. This is a, a first phase of a multi-phase waterline project. So this project is getting done. Primarily somewhat fast track in order to get this waterline on seventeen sixty five, because TechDoc is constructing some sidewalks on that street. And, uh, we want to get this waterline in before they do their water, their sidewalks.
Rick is being modest. We had a really good return on, on, on these bids, so we're very excited about that. Also excited that TechDoc wants to move forward on these projects for these sidewalks as soon as possible. So in line with what's the support you've had so far to approve the project, get the engineering done, put it out to bid. This is now the next step, which would be to award the contractor to get this done. Soon as this is done, the plan for TechDoc to follow up and, uh, start on their sidewalks in the same area immediately after.
Okay. Any questions for Rick or for Caesar? Hearing none, we'll move for approval.
I motion we approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hey now, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Let the record reflect that Mayor Pro Tem Compeon stepped out here. So this passes four to zero. Uh, Adam, not item nine, city manager's report. Uh, Caesar.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. It was requested at a previous meeting for us to break down the data of the juvenile. Uh, crime report. This was simply put into your, uh, red folders and a manager report for your review. If you have any questions, we still have our police chief available, but this was breaking down. Exactly how the offenses took place. And more importantly, if you look down below, it just shows more of. Little deeper dive into the data that, that was requested at a previous meeting. Uh, if, if further question persists, we can obviously meet with, with PD or if any questions from any individual company, what, what we want to have a response to.
Okay. Casey.
Really, um, thank you for this. I was like, when we get to see the, you know, drilled down data. Um, I would like to see, um, cause I'm assuming we're collecting it just like we do with all other. You know, um, exchanges, race and ethnicity. Uh, you know, in particular, I think, you know, I've, I've always been really interested in this data, particularly as it pertains to our curfew, you know, and, um. For reasons I've talked about many times up here, but that data is missing from this. And, you know, I think it's clear. I mean, I, I think I saw one curfew violation on there, so I'm not overly concerned about that, but the same concern persists. Making sure that we're keeping an eye and, um, well, getting, getting a chance to. Possibly intervene or make changes or respond if we start to see something really troubling. And I think that's important data to have, but otherwise I think. You know, I'm not going to say I love this or anything, but, um, you know, it was, it was helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comment?
Uh, Chief. Oh, I want to concur. As I.
Uh, Chief, oh, I want to concur, as I recall a previous report. Maybe the first, well, I, I followed these during the whole curfew discussion, like previous. And there was an intent, as I recall, in the ten, previous council meetings, uh, before I became a member of this body, to look at the ethnicity, the racial background of the juveniles that were being, being stopped, so I, I, I concur with that.
Yeah.
On, on that side. And, uh, yes, sir.
I will say, this is a cleaner report than the ones I remember getting from a few years ago, and even the most recent one, this looks nice.
We did modify it.
Well, well done, it looks a lot better, and that's the only thing I would like to see added back in that I think was a part of it at some point, but, yeah.
Uh, but for clarity purposes, what is, what are these citations for theft under a hundred dollars? What are, what are they for? Are these shoplifting?
Uh, generally, it's going to be, most of them are probably.
Yes. Theft under.
It's possible, some of them are, are individual incidences, but most of our, generally, most of our, those kind of theft citations usually come from Walmart.
Yep.
Oh, okay, those are the Wal- our Walmart friends. And weren't we working on a some sort of arrangement with them to try to, Chief, you, you brought that to us.
We, we are, uh, we are, and, uh, Vinnie Mwanza, who was here.
Yes.
The, uh, district regional director, we're working on some, uh, anti-theft programs out there. Yeah, we are doing that. And you know, it, the, the report is supposed to list, uh, interactions, accidents and crimes. And that's basically what we have right here, um, crashes, and some things went up, some went down. But you know, we really don't have a curfew problem, I mean, it's, it's, you know, we have a, you know, a warning. And it's for those under seventeen, of course, but, uh, I really, in my whole seven years tenure, we've never really had a curfew issue with, with juveniles. Uh, it's, it's, uh, was it Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday from eleven to six AM? The youths are not supposed to be on the street or in public. And on Friday and Saturday, it changes to midnight to six, then nine to three during the week. So we, we really don't have a problem with that, uh, it's not been a real big issue.
Chief, Chief, could I ask you to clarify something for me? So under that, on the first page, this is twenty two, yeah. It says total traffic accidents, five oh five, that's all traffic accidents in Lamarck.
The whole city, yes.
And then there were a hundred and two accidents involving juveniles.
Correct.
Of which that's what I'd under, sixteen drivers.
That were juveniles.
The driver, yes, the main person steering.
Uh, so, but I don't understand the distinction, he's got accidents involving juveniles of a hundred.
It might have been in the cars of passenger.
Oh, they, oh, that's a general definition, okay.
Some of those, uh, sixteen of those hundred and two were being driven by juvenile.
Okay.
Uh, and, and the reasons the numbers don't necessarily add up is because one car could have had a juvenile driver and five juvenile passengers, so we count each of those as an interaction under that act.
I see, oh, thank you for clarifying that.
Yes.
That was fine, thank you, other than that, the, that up further information, it would be helpful. But I appreciate this, I, I, by the way, I look, follow the TML reports and that is success, I notice I do because I send half of them to, great idea, but, um, I don't see a lot of other cities doing this. I, I see bigger cities, but smaller cities, I don't see a lot of.
Right.
Salt cities.
Well, it's in our ordinance.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, that are, that are focused on helping our juveniles and making sure.
And you know, I was really, really impressed with the, the thirty seven percent with the TAPS program, and it's really, um, we're making a difference.
Yeah.
With, with the, uh, reducing the social distance between the police and at-risk teens, and that's a big nu- good number there.
And I compliment you, that one time I went with you and you invited me, I was just, I was shocked, I couldn't say much, I was just overwhelmed by, by what I was seeing.
It's a good program, we're going to keep it up, uh, for as many years as we can. We're really not, we're really not using the grant money because everybody going is on duty. So, uh, we're good.
But, by the way, the two new officers that came in, were they from the new grants, the Department of Justice grant that?
They are, they're being, we're being reimbursed for them, starting October fifteenth, anybody we get, we're getting reimbursed seventy five percent.
So that's up to the seven, I was, I recall.
All right, now, all right, wait, 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 Gus, listen, listen.
Can I just say thank you one more time for putting together a clean report? It is so lovely, thank you so much.
Chief, once you update this, uh, the information with the, um, racial, um, information, I encourage you to give that to the principals of the schools so that they can see
Yeah.
some data, so they, so that perhaps they can create some programs that'll work in partnership with you all. Cause a lot of times our principals never see this, most of our principals don't live here, they work here, but they sleep somewhere else. But I think this is good data that you could share with them.
We'll do that.
Yeah.
Very good, guys, any further questions for, uh, the police department? For Caesar and under his city manager report. Item ten now, ten one, uh, naming policy, discussion possible action regarding establishing a naming policy for city-owned property and facilities, I believe that's what we're supposed to, uh, say, is that right? Okay, who wants to take this discussion?
Here, I will do the heavy lifting on this one, I got a commendant for, uh, taking the lead on this one. Uh, wanted to present something to you for, for review, this has been something you want us to bring back, uh, and share. All five of you and, and other members of the community have, have requested, uh, some of the items shared. Obviously, it's stamped as a draft because we are bringing it to you for review, and we'd like to hear more discussion, care.
I'm just here to answer any questions.
Counsel, do we have any questions?
Yes, sir, if you would, thank you. I, I just needed clarity, we have in, on, I think it's page two of the proposal here, at the very bottom, last paragraph. It talks about, um, city staff will brief, will brief the city council concurrent with the facility design process. City staff will brief the city council or designated council committee on the project and seeks direction regarding the naming. What, what, I don't, I need some clarity, what does, what's, what's this designated council committee? I don't, just give me the thought process there.
Yeah, that's probably, um, some wording needed to be changed there, but ultimately, when it comes to this, the idea was that it would be brought before a board or a commission. Um, and that was, it was supposed to be highlighted, sorry, so you guys can help us decide who you want to give that um, authority to, just so there's a buffer before it goes to council. Right, like, so it could be seen by the community first, or if you guys want to see each one, that's perfectly fine, it's up to you guys, it'll be sort of a pleasure. But, um, that be an option, or if you wanted to give, I believe in another area, and I can't tell you where, exactly where off the top of my head, um, there's the option to, for that to go to city administration for it to be reviewed before it comes to you guys. It just depends on what the council would like that to look like.
Yeah. Council, do we have, uh, any thought on, on the route this would take? Whether it would go through a board or commission or a special board or commission?
Did you find when you're researching, it's most common that it goes to a commission before it comes to council?
Um, typically, yes, um, there is a layer, either it be a panel of the council or it goes to another board or commission, depending on what is being renamed, um, is typically how other cities would handle.
If I lay on, on that too, it kind of depends, if it's going to be a tree or a bench, perhaps maybe that the parks board with the street naming, planning and zoning, there, there's a lot of different, a lot of cities do it a lot of different ways.
Yeah.
So, want to bring you information, then you guys give us some, some direction if at all possible.
What do we think, ladies?
Um, I think, so my, my first thought is, again, I want to try to mitigate any onerous labor on staff or, and, and our commission members as well, um, but I, I like the idea of potentially maybe it being I sent, I guess essentially a new commission, because it's like, if, if it's designees from each of the different commissions that could then speak to, like, if there's a park board member, a planning zone member, a keep Lamarck beautiful member that can all sort of pull from their knowledge about that sector, weighing in on it before it comes to council, that, that would work. I could see that working, again, I mean, without us knowing what kind of, you know, are we going to be like, there's a hundred requests to name something, but I mean.
Wonderful buildings.
You know, but, uh, but, I mean, you know, we don't know, we, there's no way we know that, um, so I guess that I'm interested in that. Um, but I wouldn't then want to know, is the idea of a whole new hmm, sorry, you're, sorry, you have to hear my brain in real time, um, could it operate the way that, um, uh, civil service commission operates, which is just totally needs-based, you know?
Yeah.
The idea would be, just so I can, for my notes purposes, to create potentially like a naming committee that meets on an as-needed basis.
Right, that's, that's what I'm suggesting, yeah.
And I think that that naming committee could consist of the chairpersons or the designees, I think that's what I'm hearing of, of, of those committees, and so you would perhaps, perhaps have one from parks board, planning and zoning, uh, and whatever other, uh, committees would participate or would need to participate. And then those persons would meet only on an as-needed basis, that way they continue to go about their work on their committees and they only meet when there's something that they need to, to recommend or, um, not recommend.
Considering it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, guys. Council, do we have anything we want to add to that? Go, Joe.
I have a question, just, what's a good for clarification? What does, um, can you define the term? Just saw it here too. Purposes of naming, here it is, it says, um, rename, the, the city council will act on a resolution to officially name or rename the facility, park, trail or feature. So what is the definition of feature?
So.
Does that include a park bench?
Yeah, so features were considered, uh, just in general, when we were researching, it was kind of a catch-all term. So that would be like, if you wanted to name a room after somebody, if you wanted to name, um, like a wall, like a memorial, like do a memorial wall. If you wanted to add bricks, if you wanted to do park benches, treat whatever that looks like. It gives you the ability to name whatever you choose, you could name light fixtures after people if you wanted to.
A tree.
It gives you that.
Tree.
Right, it gives you that ability to name what needed to be.
Okay, that's all. Feature, all right.
Who pays the cost? The fifteen hundred dollars cost?
The cost is incurred by whoever the request.
The requesting. So, so if I wanted to name library, if I propose naming the library after Jody and Sam, then we would have to, whoever requested it, the group or whatever, have to pay fifteen hundred dollars. Is that what I'm saying? Is that what that means?
So, and I will collaborate with legal here, um, when this was initially written, um, the fees were in relation to renaming streets.
Hmm.
Um, just because that is where the largest cost burden comes. But if you guys want to institute an application fee or uh, application fee across the board for naming features, that's something you all have the ability to do. Um, because this does include fees, you guys will see it two more times because we can only implement fees by ordinances. Um, but this is again, just a draft of kind of what I was able to put together from other cities and local and similar.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good point, though, I mean, it does seem like maybe there should be some kind of spectrum. Like if someone's proposing to name a bench versus name a building, that's not the same cost. But like, I get what you're saying, like, and that you needed to put something in here, um.
Streets are the most expensive.
And that would make sense, right? Um, and I don't really know what I'm.
But you, but you still really want to have some sort of a fee because you want to, you want to make sure that the, that the folks are serious, right? Doesn't have to be fifteen hundred, it could be a few hundred or a hundred or whatever, based on what, I get your point, yeah.
Yeah, I do think there should be a fee.
Right.
Um, because it's going to take staff time to process it, people are going to have to meet, we're going to treat them seriously.
Right.
But maybe not this, I don't know if a flat fee is.
They're in our website, what they.
Yeah, I mean, like, a lot of work will go in, this is no small thing, um, but it does seem like maybe there should be, and maybe not, actually, I don't know, um, but something to consider that maybe it's different if you're proposing to name a tree versus naming a street.
And so I think at that point, we need to, to understand the workload, right, and then associate the fees based on that, um, and bring that back to us. Any, any other comments about this policy?
Are you, I'm sorry, what are you looking from us next on this, it's just, bring back any written changes or?
Any, any comments that, any, any, any changes that you see, I would, I would for those to care for the next. Tonight, I think we're just kind of looking at it and giving initial comments.
Exactly what you got provided tonight was the first step, was the first swing at it, we wanted to give you something to chew on
Hmm.
And, and to review, and if you have any other reviews, I'm sure care and I both will, will be more than happy to accept them. This was just trying to capture what was said from all the meetings that we talked about it, because it's the first, first thing that I bite on.
And we need to consider, Gus, what it would look like if a council member were to make this request. Because it, it, that, that may look differently legally, politically, I mean, I don't know, but I think we need to probably cover that in this, in this now before we, you know, get to.
Absolutely. That's a good point.
So, any further, uh, comments? Okay, let's move now to item eleven, new business, items presented to council for discussion and possible action. Uh, eleven one, special meeting, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, discussion possible action regarding scheduling a special meeting on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three to canvass the May sixth, uh, twenty twenty-three election results. I will, uh, like to ask here what she, uh, intends for us to do about this.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't realize that I had so many items tonight. I like it. Ultimately, this is just, um, our second meeting of the month in May, does not coincide with the election schedule. Um, we do have to canvass, um, the May sixth election before May seventeen, so this is just us, um, trying to be in compliance with the electoral.
There it is.
Would this change the meeting, um, or is, is this requesting three meetings in a row, or is this moving the twenty-second to the fifteenth?
So. As it stands currently, it would be three meetings in a row, we've gone back and forth about this for quite a bit. But ultimately, we will start the fifteenth with one council and effectively end it potentially, or at least in one seat.
Yeah.
With another.
Yeah.
So, um, it was going to be hard to decide who to give that information to.
Yeah.
So we would need to do a separate meeting to get that change over to happen.
Yeah, I'm, I, I was just asking because I wanted to make sure they know.
It was just a little plug that you won't be here on the twenty-second?
No, 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 obviously, I don't think I'm, it's not appropriate for me to weigh in on that, so, but, just, just, I think that's.
But for anybody else who may have had a similar question, our intent is to be as efficient as possible with the first May meeting. Uh, and also allow enough time for a new council member to, uh, go through their process and, and, and have a proper onboarding process.
Uh, okay, guys, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
The second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Eleven two, items for the good of the order, who would like to go first? Michael.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to go first?
Sure. First off, I'd like to, uh, thank the citizen that came up and spoke about, um, wanting me to step down, I appreciate that, um, and I understand why, however, when you look at people who represent their city, their county, their state, such as Dan Crenshaw, Ted Cruz, oh, and Maze Middleton. They don't live here, however, they still represent. So, I don't see why I can't. There is nothing different. And I thank you for, for bringing it to everyone's attention and, um, that's all I have to say on that for right now. And to all the staff, appreciate all the hard work. That's all I have to say on that for right now, and to all the staff, appreciate all the hard work. As always, to all the boards and commissions, thank you, to my fellow council members. I appreciate your support and appreciate all that you guys do, guys and gals. Uh to the city manager, I know you have a very tough job still, and I appreciate everything that you and the city clerk do. So thank you, and that's all I have.
Um happy Easter to those who celebrate Easter, I hope you had a wonderful weekend. Um and I hope it was meaningful for you and happy Passover to those who are still in the middle of Passover. I hope you're having a significant Passover holiday, and thanks as always to the people who are sitting here in these chairs. Thanks for being here, thanks for giving in all the ways, thanks to staff, thank you so very, very much, and. Happy week, there we go.
There it is.
You can come back to me, go.
You want to go, Joe?
First uh. Casey, I want to congratulate Galveston's own farmer's market or or the relationship and the collaboration you're doing. With the schools, with the and uh that's dynamic, uh those kids. Uh and I've been out there visiting the little vegetable gardens and and uh thanks for giving them a. A forum, I wish I could have been out there, you have that every Sunday, right?
It's happening this Sunday and next Sunday, Joe.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, uh and. He's talking about our school kids in the young gardeners program in Galveston Independent School District, they're growing food. They grow food year round in the school gardens and they're bringing it to the farmer's market these Sundays and selling it.
And selling it.
Yeah, that's been pretty great.
On the Sunday, so I'm gonna try to.
Thank you, Joe.
And congratulations on that, uh I do also, it's um, it's very rare. I say rare, it's an, it's uh, I shouldn't say rare, it's a special event, uh whenever we have. Anybody that's in our communities that um takes a vow to become a priest. And I I do want to congratulate um the Mitch Nittend, their grandson, who took that vow. Um to to become a a priest, and and that's. Priests are worth their weight in gold as of these days because not too many people want to get involved in that particular ministry. It's challenging, but uh I congratulate them, um and the mayor and council. Uh for some of the upcoming agendas, as we begin our work for the uh budget. And hopefully I'm around for that as well too, and all depends upon uh people getting out to vote, of course. Early voting, remember, begins April the twenty fourth through May the second, and then the election day is May the sixth. Uh but uh ask us to have a uh a. A discussion with regard to all our property tax exemptions here in the city of Lamarck. Uh where especially I want to focus in on the the amount of twenty thousand dollars we presently have. And and to see what ver- what increases that we can make on that for the benefit of our of our residents. And then to make sure that we are taking advantage of all exemptions in the case of those for the disabled. And our and our veterans as well too, uh and that's something, an upcoming agenda item, but certainly before the budget. And then the uh. The last thing, it was one of the items. I think that that's it, Mayor, that's the right call.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, sir.
Kimberly.
Then the uh.
Okay, okay. I was like, oh, so, um, yeah, for the good of the order, I just, I'm just so excited to see the TOPS program. Which that program was uh part of the Safe City Initiative um recommendation that we gave. Um when we first got elected, so to see that come to fruition and see the data and see Dr. Penn again. That was amazing, right, and to see that partnership that has never occurred before, let me say that. Um between the city of Lamarck and um Tech City ISD or the high school. Um so that data was, it was great, so that 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 really makes me feel good. Um upon visiting some of our constituents, um there was a young man by the name of Randy Ruiz. Who lives on Pearl Street. And he'll be here on April twenty fourth to talk about how this city, the police. The community, the mayor, this council has helped to make Pearl Street a lot safer. Um he's getting his speech ready for April twenty fourth to come and let. Uh us see a real manifestation of a kid that's been helped by some of the good work that's been done, so hats off to you, chief. And your team, um it's a good feeling when you walk into a classroom and a kid raises his hand to say thank you. Um, I Stop the Violence uh Week will be April twenty third through April twenty ninth. Um we'll be talking about uh violence and we'll be giving the data about um. What what is, what has occurred basically in our city. Uh and the the places that we have seen progress in, I think. That we need to tell our own narrative about some of the good work that's happening here. Also, with some of these streets that we've been having problems with, we've been kind of talking, right? Uh I made some visits to our commissioner, uh Commissioner Holmes, I'm making phone calls to H GAC as well. To see what we can do with some of these um streets that still have potholes. And we know that it's a work in progress, but I believe that we have resources um out there that really want to help Lamarck. We know that Lamarck is the second fastest growing city in Galveston County, and people are watching us, and we want to make sure that. We shine and also that we find where those resources are to help us with uh the unfortunate tax rollback that we had. And now we're seeing some of that kind of coming to play when we have uh. Some potholes that are that are that need to be fixed, so um but kudos off to you all doing the best you can with what you have. And what we've had to adjust to, um but I encourage our citizens to get involved. To find grants, to to find the resources to beautify our city. Um we we have boards that our citizens can serve on to help, and it does take all of us. And I'm quick to tell our residents of District A, I need your eyes, I need you to tell me what you see, because I'm not, I'm not omniscient, I'm not. Sovereign, I don't see everything, so, but once we communicate and have dialogue. And know that we'll do our best to deliver, so hats off to to you, Caesar, and your team and the staff and all the hard work. That you all have done, um and other than that, I look forward, please come out and see us at Stop the Violence, come through. Talk to our young people, we have a basketball tournament on the twenty ninth. Um and we're looking for teams to sign up during the basketball tournament, we're gonna have a job fair there and a housing fair. As well, and try to help uh Baker Ripley there as well, to help with uh areas such as uh utilities and things of that. Trying to find, trying to help families with subsidies, so with that, Mayor, for the good of order, I am proud. To be a citizen of Lamarck, Texas. Bam!
Alright, thank you, Kimberly. Caesar. I want a plan to be presented to this council, doesn't have to be in an open council meeting, it could be via email. Uh for us as a city to capture the other forty percent of potential rental registration revenue, it is. Unfair. For us to increase the fees associated with this rental registration and then not also capture every. Revenue stream associated with that ordinance, number two. Uh I would like to uh have the Lamarck twenty fifty parameters. Uh in place for this council to act upon on next meeting, this is an important, we are at an important juncture in our. Uh time here in this city, uh an opportunity for us to grow exponentially. Uh in order for us to do that, we have to know how we want to grow. And we need to understand and get the buy-in from our community. And not only our citizens, but but our commercial partners, uh corporate partners as well. And so I'd look to see a comprehensive parameter, if you will, for us to move forward. Lastly, I want to remind us that on April fifteenth, I believe that's this Saturday, I believe it's at Queen of Peace, is that right, chief? Queen of Peace, uh April fifteenth, uh eleven thirty AM, we will have our one year anniversary of our community oriented policing reboot. Is that right? April fifteenth, eleven thirty at Queen of Peace. And we're serving lunch, I'm not serving lunch, are you serving lunch? You're serving lunch, I'm not in that. You're welcome to come out and be a part of this wonderful, wonderful opportunity, uh great, great atmosphere, and I'm sure we'll have a great time. There's nothing further, I want to thank again this council, thank city's uh staff. And those members of our community that have been a part of this meeting, those that have been here with us physically, those that have joined us. Electronically, all of you are wonderful, wonderful human beings, we look forward to continue serving you. And working with you as a council, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, Mayor, on the meeting at Queen of Peace, I asked Kira if she could notice that in the event that.
Possible quorum.
Possible quorum, and.
You want, okay. Okay.
And um and then also Chief Mayor, man, I forgot, and um. Uh also Kyle, we have the hurricane huddle for Lamarck on April the twenty ninth as well too, so. It's something to remember, come out to the main fire station for that.
Yes, absolutely, Kyle, did you want to add to that? Oh, you don't have a microphone, uh Caesar, did you want to add for Kyle?
The event will take place at uh Federal Fire Station, April twenty ninth, ten AM. And we'll be make sure to uh share that amongst everybody, we have a very busy event season coming up the next. Three months.
Yeah.
Uh a lot of stuff coming down the pipe that we're excited to share, I know we haven't gotten to that item yet, but um. We did host the Salvation Army Food Giveaway, uh where we're increasing that partnership to try to help with our food scarcity. And we're happy to announce that they'd like to possibly make that a monthly event, so we're working out the details so we can share that. So we can help the residents of Lamarck with their food scarcity issues.
Very good, are you now in the eleven three upcoming events, is that?
I didn't, go ahead, sir, that that was, that was it, those other upcoming events, we got too many to name, I know that we'll be announcing summer. Uh a reading program that should be announced here soon.
Okay.
Uh Meals on Wheels also is is taking a very uh large step forward as far as what we'd like to do with them and and increasing that partnership. Um to your point, for us to have only sixty residents being served in our city, we'd like to, we know we have a lot more uh uh seniors. That 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 are qualified and we need to try to do what we can to get the word out for them.
Very good.
Thank you. Spring cleaning on the twenty second.
Of April?
Yes, April twenty second is the spring cleaning, thank you.
Okay.
So much going on.
Very good, if there's nothing further, I think we are moving past executive session, I don't know that we have. Uh one, uh and so we don't have any items, uh action items to be taken from executive session.
I move that we adjourn.
Is it second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adjourn.
Bye, Mike.